Okay, IT thinks we're ready to go. Can I restart roll?
Yeah, if you could do the roll again.
Ezri?
Yes, present.
Portato?
Here.
Goss?
Here.
Harper?
Here.
King?
Here.
Laxton? McGuire?
Present.
Michaels?
Here.
Passalacqua?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
Rodriguez? Store?
Here.
Rob?
Here.
Summers?
Present.
Taylor?
Here.
Lerslin? Vannich Theronot?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Wolken?
Here.
Carter?
Here.
Ower? Patterson?
Here. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda and addendum. Could I have a motion?
So moved, Strub.
Second, Vannich Theronot.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, could you please call the roll?
Ezri?
Yes.
Portato?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Passalacqua?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Store?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Vannich Theronot?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wolken?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Yes. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the January 11th, 2022 regular meeting. Have a motion.
That was something.
Carter.
So moved, Ezri, to approve the minutes.
Summers, second.
All right, is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, could you please call the roll?
Ezri? Portato?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
King? King?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Passalacqua?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Store?
Yeah.
Rob?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Yeah.
Taylor?
Yes.
Vannich Theronot?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes. Next on the agenda is public participation. To any members of the public, I'd like to speak. Please raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone. So moving on to communications, are there any communications from board members? Ms. Taylor?
Yeah, just kind of a note, I can barely hear Megan when she's doing the roll. So if you could speak a little louder, Megan, that would be great.
Anybody else? Ms. Strub?
This was mentioned in committee, but I just wanted to thank all of the employees of the Highway Department for their tireless work during the snow event earlier this month. Thank you for keeping all of our county members, all of our county people, safe.
Thanks for that. Any other board members have communications? All right, seeing none, moving on to Justice and Social Services. Ms. Taylor?
Okay, sorry. Item A, we have the monthly reports for emergency management, probation of court services, public defender and animal control. Those are on each department's page. Item B, we have the Rosecrans Free Entry Financial Report that has been placed on file. That's information only. Item C, on page 13 of your packet. I don't remember, Kyle. Do I need to read this whole resolution?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Can I get a motion for the resolution directing the county board to modify the animal control ordinance?
So moved, King. Second, Vannich Theronot.
All right, we got Ms. King and Ms. Vannich Theronot as a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no hands. Megan, could you please call the roll?
Ezri?
Yes.
Portato?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Harper?
No.
King?
Yes.
McGuire?
No.
Michaels?
Yes.
Passalacqua?
Yes.
Paul?
No.
Store?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Vannich Theronot?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Wolken?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Motion passes. And next we have there is no chairs report. And item E, designation of items to be placed on the consent agenda is 7C1. That is all I have. Back to you, Kyle.
All right, next we have policy personnel appointments. Mr. Store?
Thank you.
Point of order. This is board member Goss on that 7C1, the ordinance didn't pass unanimously, so it shouldn't be on consent.
That's correct.
Very good. Under policy personnel appointments, normally I don't kind of comment about the monthly human resources report. Well, I'd like to call to the board's attention that we have 43 vacancies of county employees, 11 of which are those are court service officers. These are, and I, and about five correctional officers. I contacted some of the departments and for whatever reason, we're having a lot of trouble filling a number of these county important county positions. And it doesn't relate entirely to salary, but some of it has to do with shift work. And I we'll just kind of continue to look at that further. That's, I encourage members of the board to contact people in their respective districts and let them know about these openings. Moving on to item number eight, number two, I'd like an omnibus motion for number two appointments and reappointments for A, B, C, D, E, and F and G. Resolution appointing Phil Frastella, Republican, to the Urbana Mass Transit District Board, term ending December 31st, 2026. Resolution appointing Rachel Voss to Rural Transit Advisory Group, term ending December 31st, 2022. Resolution appointing Lori Larson to the Rural Transit Advisory Group, term ending December 31st, 2022. Resolution appointing Mary Sleet to the Rural Transit Advisory Group, term ending December 31st, 2022. Resolution appointing Nathan Montgomery to the Rural Transit Advisory Group, term ending December 31st, 2022. Resolution appointing Tawana Nickens to the Rural Transit Advisory Group, term ending December 31st, 2022. And resolution appointing John Emmon to the number two, number 10, Town of Ogden Drainage District, term ending August 31st, 2023. Do we have a motion for that omnibus motion? Ms. Michaels, thank you. Looking for a second?
Second, Carter.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Is there any discussion to the omnibus motion? Hearing none and seeing no raised hands, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ezri?
Yes.
Portato?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Passalacqua?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Store?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Vannich Theronot?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wolken?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Thank you. There are several vacancies or appointments on county boards, two for mental health board, one for developmental disabilities board, several for fire protection districts, cemetery associations, drainage districts, and our perpetual search for people to serve on the zoning board of appeals. The, let's see. Next is, well, there are a list of appointments expiring in 2021. That website, or that link, a link to that website is on our agenda. Item number three, recommendation to the finance committee for approval of the creation of new position titled animal control clerk slash kennel worker recommends the new clerk slash kennel worker position be added to the ASME general bargaining unit in grade range D. Can I have a motion for approval?
So moved, Carter. Oh, sorry, Samantha, you can have that one.
Okay, Samantha, you get the, you get the motion. Lee, do you want to be the second?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Discussion on the recommendation. Ms. Michaels?
Yes, sir. It's my understanding that this actually only adds a half a person, but my question is, is this going to cover the person that already exists in addition to the other half? I don't want to lose sight of what we already have half time. So are we taking this halftime and adding it to somebody that is already half to make a whole position?
The position is vacant, Ms. Michaels. Currently, we have, we have not filled the halftime position for several years. And, and so we're taking that position which hasn't been able to be filled, we're moving it to a full-time position that covers both tasks because that's what we need to be able to get the work done.
Yeah, I didn't want to lose sight of what we already have.
Right. So, yeah, it's, so it's replacing that halftime position. There's not a person in it at this time. We do have a temporary person down there that's been working full-time because we've had a person out on maternity leave, but we don't have the halftime position filled.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Michaels. Is there further discussion on the, on the recommendation? Okay, I guess in order to move this long, I guess that we'll need to vote. Oh, Mr. Williams?
Thank you. If there's anyone here on the animal control task force, I just wanted to clarify, did this position come from that, come from that task force? Is that where this came from? Where is this?
No, this is just something that they've needed for a while.
Okay, so are we implementing any of the recommendations from the task force besides the F?
That is not something that's under the purview of the board. The task force was just recommendations. The only thing that we can really affect is budgetary and then this sort of ASME kind of general bargaining unit stuff.
Are there, are there any more positions that that is needed besides this one in animal control?
Darlene would know that. What do you have, Darlene?
Well, eventually I think we would want to add one more warden to the, to the staff, but at this point in time, we don't have the funding to accommodate that, and we're not sure about the caseloads. Depends on these new contracts and some other factors that are going on down there. So, you know, it's potentially possible that when budget comes around, budget time, we may want to add another warden position as well. What I can say is that this, for those of you that have been on the board just a short time, this department is totally self-funded in the county. So they make their revenues through fees and the contracts they have with the various municipalities, and they pay their staff from that. So that's what we can accommodate doing.
Thank you.
Does that satisfy everybody's questions about this? Okay, hearing, hearing no further question or questions or ask or request for discussion, would the clerk please call the roll on this recommendation?
Ezri?
Yes.
Portato?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Passalacqua?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Store?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Summers? Summers? Taylor?
Yes.
Vannich Theronot?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wolken?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. The clerk's report is in the packet. We have no other business. There is no chairs report. Designation of items to be placed on consent agenda are items two, A through G, and item number three. Back to you, Chairman Patterson.
Thanks, Chris.
I don't think item three needs to be on the consent agenda. It's just moving it to the finance committee.
Oh, fair point, fair point, fair point.
All right, next on the agenda is finance. Ms. Portato?
Sure, budget amendment 21-00069, Fund 611, County Clerk Surcharge Fund, Department 022, County Clerk, Increased Appropriations 760, Increase Revenue 760 to cover surcharge funds for 2021 death certificates or charges to Illinois Department of Public Health. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Strub.
Strub, second.
Taylor.
Taylor. Discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk could please call the roll?
Ezri?
Yes.
Portato?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Passalacqua?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Store?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Summers? Taylor?
Yes.
Vannich Theronot?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wolken?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
All right, next up, budget amendment 21-00070, Fund 080, General Corporate, Department 031, Circuit Clerk Court, Increase Appropriations 219, Increase Revenue 0. The reason is request increased appropriation to our regular full-time employees line to remedy the overdrawn line for an employee payout. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Goss.
Mr. Goss, second.
Michael.
Michael, second. And Tammy, do you have something to, to say to this? Yes, I, I apologize. I just now realized that there is a typo on the agenda. The actual budget amendment is for $239 as opposed to 219. Oh, yeah, I see that. Okay, you're right. I'm sorry, that was overlooked in agenda review. I didn't catch that, actually. So thanks, Tammy. All right, so 239, is everybody cool with it being 239 that moved it? All right, any other discussion? Thanks, Tammy, for having our back. Wayne?
Hey, I just want to say, I, I never really understood, and like every unit of government does this, but in our financial reports, why we don't report accrued sick and vacation, so we know what the potential liabilities are. And I just wanted to put that out there. No one does it. I, I think that we should, or at the very least, it could be a a footnote in the audit, but I just wanted to put that out there, that just a person in the public would have no idea what the outstanding liabilities are for accrued sick and vacation, and that's it.
The Orion's hand up, Orion, did you want to speak to that question?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, good question, Wayne. It is in the, the finance statements for the ACFIR, or, you know, the consolidated report. The reason why it's not included within the budget year to year, it's just a difference between budgetary and GAAP basis for accounting. For budgetary accounting, you're not supposed to accrue for things that you technically don't know if and what, you know, basically you're creating a budget for a year for payouts that you know that you're going to experience. So it's kind of like a short-term basis of you're only thinking one year out versus GAAP where, you know, you account for everything.
No, I want to be clear, like I wasn't asked the question. I knew why, why it's not there, just, you know, I think it, it should, you know, there should be some type, and, and no unit of government does this, as far as I can tell. It's just something that, you know, I, I know that when I first got elected assessor, I had no idea what the outstanding sick and vacation liabilities were, and, and I got hit with that pretty hard. And so, you know, I just think it's something that we could find a way to report. But I, I understand why it's not there, and it's, it's not a criticism, it's just.
No, I know, I, I got you. Is it, is it something like you guys would want to see like a, because I, I know right now we actually have like payroll reports that include that information on it. Is it something you guys would just want to see like on a monthly basis, or? I guess, how would you like to see it in the reports, if, if it was to be included on something like that?
I don't think it needs to be monthly. I think that, you know, annually would be fine. Like, you know, and maybe I'm just a nerd that wants to see, you know, something like that. You know, I'd like to actually, you know, if, if board member Michaels wouldn't mind commenting, I know she was the auditor at one point, if you had any thoughts on it.
I think it's something that most of the departments are aware of. If it's something that the board would like to see, I, I more or less would maybe, you know, on an annual basis or something, when we're doing budget, just, just happen as a side note, certainly nothing that would be in, in the report itself. You know, I think every department knows what their liability is for that. So, you know, it's, it's a preference. It's always easy to pull out whenever needed. Mr. Danos is here also. I don't know how to feel about it, but annually would be fine, just as we're making the budget, it would kind of be a an aha moment, if you will, of other things that are a liability potentially to the county.
Yeah, no, it's already included in the, like the, the annual financial report, but yeah, we can definitely disclose it as well to at the end of the year to the board. That's not a big deal at all. I mean, we already have the information available, so.
Darlene?
That's fine.
Darlene? Yeah, I would just like to say, when we do the budgets, we do take into account, for example, if we know people are retiring that year, if we know there's a lot of folks that have accrued time, we try to put something in the budget for that in each department. So we don't always guess correctly, but we, we do try to put something in. All right, yeah, this is probably the least amount that I've seen. I think we had this one and another really small amount last board meeting. There have been years where, I remember one year, the sheriff's office, when I first got on the board, had a pretty heavy hit, because I think several of their longtime employees had left. It was like, no, five years ago. All right, thanks, Wayne, for bringing that up. Any last thoughts on this? All right, let's vote.
Ezri?
Yes.
Portato?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Passalacqua?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Store?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Summers? Taylor?
Yes.
Vannich Theronot?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wolken?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Okay, if it's cool with everybody, I'm going to take the next two together. Does anybody have any objections to that? All right, budget amendment, BUA 2022162, Fund 1080, General Corporate, Department 075, General County, Increase Appropriations 28,520, Increase Revenue 0. Amendment necessary for 2020 audit services incomplete at end of fiscal year 2021 to be paid in fiscal year 2022. And then budget amendment, BUA 20221, George, if you could mute yourself, 346, Fund 8850, GIS Consortium, Department 111, GIS Operations and Administration, Increase Appropriations 1,0790, Increase Revenue 0. Reason amendment necessary for 2020 audit services incomplete at the end of fiscal year 21, 2021 to be paid in fiscal year 2022. Do I have a motion for those two resolutions?
So moved, King?
King, second.
Second, Patterson.
All right, discussion? Seeing none, I will say, I find the, this new system's resolution generation to be strange and illogical. Like, I don't know why 162 and 1346 were, in the past, they were just in numerical order, which was really nice, and also made it like easier to try to find them in the future. But this just seems weird. Um, but this just seems weird and arbitrary numbers. Uh, but that has nothing to do with the resolutions at hand outside of the way we receive them. Uh, the vote, please.
Ezri?
Yes.
Fortato?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Pasalaqua?
Yes.
Paul? Paul?
Yes.
Store?
Yes.
Job?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thor's, uh, Vantage Theronut?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vulcan?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Um, next up, is it okay with everyone if I take the next three? The, I'm of us, uh, Resolution Authorizing, uh, An Intergovernmental Agreement for Animal Control Services with the Village of Toluana. Resolution Authorizing An Intergovernmental Agreement for Animals' Control Services With the Village of Savoy. Resolution Authorizing An Intergovernmental Agreement for Animal Control Services With the City of Urbana. Uh, do I have a motion? So moved Michaels. Michaels, do I have a second?
Taylor, second.
Taylor, and then I believe, um, Darlene has a, a point to make. Yeah, I just wanted to let folks know that, um, the Toluana contract is actually, there was a typo in it in terms of the amount. It should say one dollar and forty-nine cents per person. Similar to the other two, we didn't, we didn't catch that, and I apologize. But, um, I'm going back to Toluana to revise that, but they will have the same rate as everybody else. Here, we thought Toluana was getting a discount. All right, uh, any discussion? Um, Mr. Williams?
So do we have to, since we're, since the text is in the contracts that we're voting on, do we need to, um, vote to amend the contract to reflect that?
Well, I think if we just noted here that that's, that that's what we're doing, we're, we will, I will have to take it back to Toluana for they, them to re-sign it, because they've already approved it.
Okay.
Kyle?
What was the new dollar amount?
One forty-nine. It's one forty-nine instead of one forty-seven.
All right, um, I think for process's sake, I'd, I'd move a friendly amendment to change the text to one forty-nine.
Okay. Is that cool with the motioners? Okay.
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk could please call the roll with that change.
Ezri?
Yes.
Fortato?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Pasalaqua?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Store?
Yes.
Straub?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Vantage Theronut?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vulcan?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
All right, now for the deja vu portion of the evening. Recommendation to the County Board for Approval of Creation of a New Position Titled Animal Control Clerk Kennel Worker and Recommends The New Clerk Kennel Worker Position to Be Added To The Ask Me General Bargaining Unit in Grade Range D. Do you have a motion?
Taylor, motion?
Taylor, second?
Straub.
Straub, second. Discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk could please call the roll.
Ezri?
Yes.
Fortato?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Pasalaqua?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Store?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Vantage Theronut?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vulcan?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Okay, next up, Budget Amendment BUA two zero two 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 one one Fund, uh, two zero nine one Animal Control Department two four seven Animal Warden Services. Fund two oh nine one Animal Control Department two four eight Animal Inbound Services Increase Appropriations one hundred fifteen thousand six hundred thirty-six dollars, Increase Revenues, uh, fifty-four thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars. Uh, Reason New Contracts Added An Additional Appropriation Needed, and there's a memo outlining, uh, what it's for. Um, do I have a motion?
So moved Carter.
Carter, second?
Second Vantage Theronut?
All right, second Vantage Theronut, uh, discussion. Uh, Diane?
Sorry, just a quick question here. I see on the expenses that some of these, I would wonder why they weren't like part of their capital improvement on things, because of computers and monitors. Um, you know, I understand radios might come last minute or something like that, and uniforms and, uh, and that. I just thought that was odd that that would be there now. I mean, I understand the salary, um, items, but I just thought it was unusual midterm that we'd be making Budget Amendment for those type of items.
So, computers, Diane, are all, the computers are put in the capital inventory. But, uh, animal control doesn't really have a capital account. They just have a line item. So it's not a separate account.
Okay, thank you.
And I think a big part of it too is like, we're getting the deal on the, the van or the vehicle, and so that, that was maybe not a hundred percent something we anticipated, so. Well, also, I think also, I was trying to show you, basically, the budget was trying to show you that the amounts of the contract is basically going to pay for the operating costs, and then the, the vehicle was kind of extra that we needed to come out of the, that of their, out of their balance from. Yeah. And I forget, we discussed in, in Finance Agenda, they, they still have a pretty decent fund balance, correct, Darlene? They do. They've got about a two hundred thousand dollar fund balance, because we were saving for, if we, if we, they stay in the building that they're in, we will need, we've been talking about putting in air conditioning in that building, which it does not have currently. We have to roll up the back doors to get air through the building in the summer. And, um, that would involve also doing some pretty significant work to their electrical connections to the, the poles. So we were saving up for that, but, um, we'll still have, we, we still got quite, quite a good amount for that, yes.
I just thought it was odd when you were having the budget amendment.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's not a separate account. Yeah.
That would be, okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion on that one?
Uh, I've got a question. It's Jim Goss.
Sure.
So when we went through this in Finance Review, um, we showed the fifty-four thousand on the revenue side, but we didn't include Savoy. It looks like we just approved Savoy. Do we know what that amount is so we can get them?
Right. We did not include Savoy because they have not approved the grant. They, um, have it coming up at their board meeting this month. And it was not, it will not, it wasn't approved as of tonight. Um, it hopefully will be approved by the time we do the board meeting. Um, I think their meeting is on the seventeenth. But we didn't include that. We didn't include it in the revenue. Their amount is going to come out. I, I don't have an exact amount in front of me. I think it's about eight thousand dollars.
Okay, so I, we'll, we'll adjust the amendment at that point, or?
No, we can still accept new revenue. We, we're not planning on spending it this year, but we can accept the revenue. We'll have to come back later. Right, just for a point of clarification, so, because then also if Toluana, Toluana's might have to be recalculated at two cents per person, so that might be additional revenue. So you're, what you're thinking is that we're only going to appropriate this amount of revenue for this year? And then the rest of that would go to continue to try to build the fund balance back up for the, the potential air conditioning project? Is that what? Yeah, it, it's not going to be very much, two cents per person. Toluana's population isn't very big, so it, it's not going to amount to a lot of money. Um, potentially, we accept new, we accept more revenue than we budget sometimes through our fees and fines as well. So we will, we'll have to do maybe a budget amendment later in the year, but it's early, it's too early to tell right now. Okay. All right. Any other questions on that one? Thanks, Jim. Um, please call the roll.
Ezri?
Yes.
Fortato?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Pasalaqua?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Store?
Yes.
Job?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Vantage Theronut?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vulcan?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
All right. Um, next up, Resolution Abating Certain Taxes Here To Levy To Pay The Principal Of An Interest On Various Upstanding Bonds Of The County Of Champagne, Illinois. Do I have a motion?
Pasalaqua, so moved.
Uh, Brad, thank you. Pasalaqua, second?
Second, Carter.
Um, sorry, I heard Goss first, so second Goss. Um, do, is there discussion on this one? All right, if the clerk could please call the roll.
Ezri?
Yes.
Fortato?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Pasalaqua?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Store?
Yes.
Straub?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Vantage Theronut?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vulcan?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
All right, next up, uh, the treasurer, uh, the treasurer's here in case anyone has any questions. Um, Resolution Authorizing The County Executive To Assign Mobile Home Tax Sale Certificate Of Purchase. Do I have a motion?
So moved Carter.
Carter? Got it. Straub, second. Carter, first. Straub, second. Do I have any discussion? All right, seeing none, if the clerk could please call the roll.
Ezri?
Yes.
Fortato?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Pasalaqua?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Store?
Yes.
Straub?
Yes, sorry.
Taylor?
Yes.
Vantage Theronut?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vulcan?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Um, all right, does anybody have anything for the treasurer, the auditor? All right, see nothing. Other business? See nothing. I don't have a chair's report. Designation of items to be placed in the consent agenda, A one, two, three, four, B one, two, three, four, five, six. And I'm done. Thanks, Kyle.
C two?
What? Sorry, say that again?
C two from the treasurer.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. You're right. And then also C two from the treasurer. You're right.
All right, um, seeing no other business, uh, call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Good night.
Night, everyone.